Close the door.
Close the door, I'll just leave it.
I'd leave it the way it is. You all set, Dave? Oh, here we go. All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Tom Courier. I work for Mastod. I'm a project manager with the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division. I'm here with a bunch of friends tonight to present the Yarmouth Corridor improvements on Route 28 project. Twenty-five percent design, preliminary design. I'm here, the designers who are doing this for us are Greenman Peterson, Inc. We have Steve Babalas, the traffic engineer. John Tamborini is a PM with a project manager with Greenman Peterson. And the vice president, John Osorio. And Chad Brazi, civil engineer with GPI, also working on the project. And I have two folks from Howard Needles, Tammon and Burgendoff, HNTB, who are helping with the facilitation of getting your names and gathering the questions and making a recording of tonight's presentation. And we will have that up on the Mastod website in a few days with closed captioning captured by this lady over here, Melissa Lupo. And she is capturing a verbatim transcript, which will result in closed captioning on the presentation on our website at Mastod. So folks who can't be with us physically tonight but want to view the presentation or comment or ask questions can do so through the Mastod website. In addition, the town of Yarmouth is actually recording tonight and broadcasting this live, I believe, on the cable channel. So this project you've probably heard wind of in the last several months or a couple of years. We've been working on it. We were here in August to make a very similar presentation to the Board of Select Persons. And Greenman Peterson has done a fantastic job putting this together. We're basically adding bicycle and pedestrian accommodation to Route 28 and improving the safety and efficiency of all the intersections from the Yarmouth Road intersection in Barnstable all the way to the Parker River in Yarmouth. I'm going to just touch on a few facts and then I'll turn it over to Greenman Peterson, John and Steve to do the presentation, which is really what you're here to see. So we have programmed this project for advertisement for construction in fiscal year 2028, actually in June of 2028. And believe it or not, it's going to take every minute from now until then to probably get this ready. There's a really significant amount of environmental permitting that goes along with this project because we're touching on so many sensitive resource areas along the way. In addition, there's some significant right-of-way impacts that we have to acquire the rights to build the project. A few of those impacts are on Article 97 property, public property. And that requires an act of legislation to acquire those rights. That's a very long process. Anyway, and there's a heck of a lot of design work. I mean, our utility engineer from District 5, Chris Lockett, is in the audience tonight. And he can tell you just the utility relocations associated with this three-and-a-half-mile project are just gigantic. He's in charge of coordinating all that with the utility companies and the designers. We've programmed all of fifteen-and-a-half million for the project in 2028, which is woefully inadequate. I laugh. It's probably going to end up about three times that amount. But we have four years to find that other 30 million, and we will. This is an important project. It's an incredibly high-volume stretch of Route 28. It's a real dense business corridor, lots of vehicles, lots of pedestrians, lots of bicyclists. And there's no place for those. And we're going to find one for them and improve the safety and operational abilities of the roadway. And that's where Steve comes in. He's going to work his magic and try and make cars, vehicles, pass from one end to the other more efficiently. So I've mentioned the ad date. I've mentioned the cost and how we're short some cash. We've got a lot of permitting, a lot of design work and a lot of right-of-way to acquire. With that, I'm going to turn it over to John and Steve, who will now give us a nice technical presentation of what we have planned. And then we'd like to hear from you. That's the most important part of the evening is after we present, we'd like to hear what you think of it. Comments, criticisms, suggestions. And we know that GPI has done an awful lot of work to get ready for this evening. You can see those nice boards out in the hallway. There's actually a TV presentation running endlessly out there. That's a flyover video of what the corridor will look like. And it's really pretty neat. I encourage you all to take a look at that after we get through the formal part. With that, I'll be quiet and turn it over to John and Steve.
Thanks, Tom. You went through some introductions. So thank you all for coming tonight. For tonight's presentation, we will be reviewing the project history, the project need, project objectives, proposed improvements, project impacts and the project schedule before opening up the hearing to question and answers. This will be your opportunity to ask questions, provide feedback or look for clarification on any of the presentation materials. And your feedback is important to us. And we certainly encourage and appreciate your participation. This slide shows the more recent public outreach that has been conducted for this project. Some of you may have seen our team presenting in front of the Yarmouth Select Board this summer. Additionally, in preparation for tonight, the public hearing notice, it appeared in the Cape Cod Times. A flyer was also posted in various public locations throughout the town and the town's website and social media pages. The Yarmouth Chamber of Commerce was also informed of the hearing tonight. So how did we get here? In 2019, Mastod conducted what's called a road safety audit, which is an evaluation of safety deficiencies at intersections and corridors. These audits are typically triggered by high-crash locations. Route 28 has three crash clusters, locations which I will discuss later in the presentation. The 25% design, it was completed in March of 2021. But since then, the project has evolved and Mastod decided to evaluate the intersections more in depth and extend the limits of work. A supplemental 25% design was developed and submitted in August of 2022. However, after further discussions with the town and Mastod, it was determined that the design for the Town Brook Road intersection be reconsidered. After this was completed, a recommended design for the corridor was submitted in June of this year. And as mentioned earlier, we presented our findings to the Select Board this past summer. And here we are tonight, presenting this amazing project to you all. So this graphic shows a shaded area in red where we anticipate project improvements. Project limits begin at the intersection of Ironar Road and Yarmouth Road in Barnstable and continue easterly for approximately three miles along Route 28 to meet the recently constructed Parker's River Bridge. And as you can see, there are also improvements to many of the side streets along the corridor within these project limits. Now I'll go over the primary reasons for why this project was initiated. As previously stated, this project was initiated by a road safety audit, which was triggered by three high-crash cluster locations along the corridor within the project limits. A 2020 Cape Cod corridor study completed by Kittleson and Associates on behalf of Mastod and the Cape Cod Commission was used to incorporate design recommendations into this project. The purpose of the study was to provide short- and long-term recommendations to improve bicycle and pedestrian accommodations along 50 miles of Route 28 from Falmouth to Orleans. As stated previously, the original 25% design of this project was limited in scope for intersection improvements. It was determined that Mastod perform an intersection control evaluation to understand what may be the most appropriate solution for the major intersections along the corridor, while considering a project of more significant scope than originally envisioned. So these three locations, these are the high-crash locations along the corridor. A vital element of this project is to improve the safety along the Route 28 corridor for all roadway users. This section of Route 28 has a history of crashes and that data was investigated to understand the crash patterns, to identify areas needing improvement. Three bike crash clusters have been identified along Route 28 and, as noted earlier, had a road safety audit conducted. The majority of the recommendations from the road safety audit have been integrated into the project design. Safety is a major component of the project. As you can see, the corridor lacks consistency with ADA-compliant sidewalks. In most cases, sidewalk can only be found on one side of the roadway. Pedestrian crossings throughout the project area are either nonexistent or not compliant for the few that do exist. They lack curb ramps, detectable warning panels, adequate signage, crosswalks. It's very difficult to cross Route 28 unless you are at one of the few intersections throughout this three-mile stretch that provides a crosswalk. In many areas throughout the corridor, obstacles, as you can see here on your right, obstructions or tripping hazards make the existing pedestrian routes unsafe and unwelcoming. Throughout the project limits, dedicated bicycle facilities are not provided. In most cases, even shoulders are not wide enough to accommodate bicycles safely. Many of the intersections along this project's corridor do not provide safe crossings for pedestrians and bicyclists. They also experience significant queuing and congestion. And side street users often find difficulty turning onto Route 28. There's a clear need for designated areas that are accessible to pedestrians and bicyclists for efficient loading and unloading onto buses. Currently, the small shoulders on the road make it difficult for buses to pull over, hindering the pickup and drop-off process. It's essential to create larger designated areas that provide enough space for buses to safely maneuver and accommodate passengers. By addressing this issue, we can enhance the accessibility and efficiency of public transportation, ensuring a smoother experience for pedestrians, bicyclists, bus riders and other motorists. Given these deficiencies, the goals of the project are quite clear. We understand the need for safer pedestrian and bicycle accommodations, especially throughout the summer when tourism is more prevalent. This project will improve pedestrian accommodations, add bicycle accommodations, improve intersection safety and geometry, and improve bus stop accommodations and efficiency. The project also plans to upgrade the drainage system throughout the project corridor. This project will improve safety for all modes while staying consistent with Mastod's Healthy Transportation Policy Directive, which encourages and promotes multimodal accommodation with the long-term goal of increasing the number of trips made by walking, biking and transit. These next slides will briefly describe the alternatives that were developed for the overall corridor cross-section and for the studied intersections. As we were determining the cross-section of the roadway, four alternatives were developed for the Route 28 corridor. The constant between the alternatives was the 18-foot travel lanes, five-foot shoulders and vertical granite curving. The main differences between the alternatives were sidewalk and shared-use path locations. A few factors came into play when determining the final cross-section. Historic properties such as the Baxter Griss Mill and the Woodside Cemetery by West Yarmouth Road helped dictate the design as well as the corridor study that was previously mentioned earlier in the presentation. Along Route 28, there are many important intersections with connecting streets. In this graphic, you'll notice the red circles indicating the currently signalized intersections that were studied as part of this project. The blue circles, they represent the currently un-signalized intersections that were studied. And as part of the project development, the safety, capacity and multimodal needs of these intersections were evaluated for potential improvements. And those improvements were incorporated into the design. We'll get more into detail about the evaluation process later in the presentation. So what everyone's here for, what's the proposed design? Along Route 28 in Yarmouth, the preferred alternative cross-section is to have a 10-foot shared-use path and a five-foot grass buffer on the southern side of the roadway and a five-and-a-half-foot cement concrete sidewalk on the northern side. This alternative was preferred in order to avoid impacts to sensitive and critical properties along the northern side of Route 28, such as the Baxter Griss Mill and the cemetery by West Yarmouth Road. And it also provides continuity to the overall vision along Route 28 corridor discussed in the 2020 corridor study previously mentioned. At this time, I'll hand it over to Steve to get more into some of the proposed improvements.
All right. Thank you. So there was a lot of important intersections along the Route 28 corridor, especially within the project limits. And as John noted earlier, through project development, we assess the capacity, safety and multimodal deficiencies along the corridor to understand what needs are out there when we were trying to figure out what the proposed improvements are. So on the screen now is an image similar to what you guys saw, what you saw earlier, showing the intersections that are currently signalized and un-signalized. But surrounding each of these intersections is the type of improvements that we are proposing with the project. And those improvements have been broken down into three separate categories. So in yellow, we are, those are locations that we are proposing to change the intersection control. In red, those are locations what we're proposing to do, signalize intersection improvements. And green, just general intersection improvements. So what are general intersection improvements? That generally consists of keeping the same type of intersection control, so being a stop control, a stop sign controlled, improving turn lanes, possibly geometry of the intersection, adding new multimodal facilities such as sidewalks, shared-use path, bike lanes. So smaller-scale general improvements. At the signalized intersection improvement locations, the type of improvements that would go there would be installing new, modern signal equipment, changing and adding new turn lanes at the intersection, adding multimodal facilities similar to what you would see at other locations, sidewalks, shared-use path, crosswalks, adding exclusive ped phases to the signalized intersections. And in yellow, that's where the more major changes are happening. We're proposing to change the intersection control. So what do I mean by that? Changing the intersection control is changing it from the stop sign control to maybe a signal or changing a signal to a roundabout, changing way traffic is controlled at the intersection. And as you can see on the screen, we are proposing to do that at two locations within the project, the intersection of East Main Street and Route 28 and the intersection of Route 28 and Town Brook Road. So how do we determine what improvements to make at each location? And the way that we, our strong tool that we use in the project development process, John already talked about a little bit earlier. It's called the Intersection Control Evaluation. And we also refer to it as ICE. And what this is, it's a data-driven framework to help us understand what is the optimal solution at a location. So it has various stages. In the initial stages, we determine what viable controls are available. And this helps us determine if we have to assess more than one at a site. And then the later stages, we start to determine what is the optimal intersection control. And through this process, we evaluate capacity, safety, multimodal needs at the location, whether there's transit, freight, impacts on private property, environmental impacts, cultural impacts. We look at construction costs and the cost to maintain it over the design life of the project. So we look at a multitude of factors to truly understand what is the right fit at this location. So what I like to do now is walk through all these key intersections and go in greater detail as to what is being proposed at each site. So starting toward the western edge of the project, I want to start at the intersection of Route 28 and East Main Street. So currently, this intersection is signal-controlled. And those who are traveling on East Main Street must continue eastward on Route 28. They cannot turn left at the intersection. The same is true for Murray Road. You can't go westbound on Route 28. We proposed installing a new, modern, multi-lane roundabout. And this will provide full access for all users, all movements and for all approaches at the site. So you will be able to turn left from East Main Street and Murray Road onto Route 28 westbound. In addition, the proposed roundabout will improve safety. And I will go into a little bit greater detail as to why the roundabout will improve safety. One thing to note is this intersection is within one of the crash clusters that was identified early in the design process. The proposed design also includes providing a shared-use path surrounding the roundabout for bike and pedestrian traffic. And across each of the approaches, new crosswalks will be provided and each with a refuge island. So this creates a two-stage crossing, which is safer for pedestrians because they only have to interact with one direction of traffic at a time. On Route 28, at the exits of the roundabout, in addition to the crosswalk, we're going to be supplementing it on Route 28 northbound with a rectangular rapid flashing beacon. And on Route 28 southbound, we will be proposing a pedestrian hybrid beacon, which is a pedestrian signal, to provide safe access across those two lanes. One other thing I want to note is we will be changing access for two properties that are proximity of the roundabout. So the Highness Junction Plaza is going to have direct access to the intersection versus the two driveways that they have today. And this will provide them full access to go, those entering and entering the site will be able to go all directions. On the southeast quadrant of the intersection at the Hayes and Hayes Laws office, we are still investigating what the right fit is there. So that's still under design. This is a rendering of what that multi-lane roundabout could look like once constructed. I also want to highlight that if, in the hallway, there is a video of a simulation of this roundabout in operation that I encourage you to go visit. So continuing east, the next intersection I want to discuss is the intersection of Route 28 and Camp Street. It's going to remain stop-controlled. There's two key improvements that I want to highlight. Left turns from Camp Street are going to be prohibited with the proposed improvements. So it'll be right out only. You will still be able to turn left and right into Camp Street. So the only change is there's no left turns out. So if you wanted to head east on Route 28, how would you do it? You have multiple options. You could travel to Town Brook Road or other intersections to the east to continue eastbound on Route 28. Or you can turn right at a Camp Street and perform a U-turn at the roundabout. The other key improvement I want to identify, I want to highlight at this location is there's a new mid-block crossing just east of Camp Street. And this new mid-block crossing, this crosswalk, thank you, is a two-stage crosswalk. There'll be a refuge island in the center of Route 28. This will also be supplemented with rectangular rapid flashing beacons. So this two-stage crosswalk will allow the pedestrians to cross in shorter distances and have to interact with only one direction of traffic at a time. In addition to these improvements, new bike lanes will be constructed on Camp Street for the limits of the project. And that'll also be, a new sidewalk will be constructed along the western edge of Camp Street. So the next intersection to the east I want to discuss is Route 28 and Town Brook Road. This is the other location that we are proposing to change the intersection control. So today, the intersection is stop-controlled on Town Brook Road and has long delays and a crash history. We are proposing to install a new, modern signal system. In addition to that, we are proposing to add new turn lanes or new auxiliary lanes at the intersection. So we'll be widening Route 28 to include an additional westbound through lane. And Town Brook Road will be widened to include an exclusive right turn lane. Surrounding the intersection, we'll be installing a shared-use path that'll be connected on all three quadrants with new crosswalks that will be supported with an exclusive pedestrian phase at the signal. Similar to Camp Street, we are proposing widening Town Brook Road to include a bike lane, bike lanes for both directions for the limits of the project and replace the sidewalk that's there in kind. This is what the Town Brook Road could look like once constructed. Continuing east, we have the intersection of Higgins-Crawwell Road and Berry Avenue. The intersection today is signalized, is going to be, remains signalized with the proposed improvements. We are proposing adding new auxiliary lanes on both Berry Avenue and Higgins-Crawwell Road. We are proposing to add a new, a shared-use path along all four quadrants of the intersection that'll connect into sidewalk. In addition, we are proposing to add bike lanes along the limits of the project on both Higgins-Crawwell Road and Berry Avenue with some new sidewalk in addition. Continuing east, there's a couple intersections in close proximity. We have the intersection of West Yarmouth Road, which today is stop-controlled. It will remain stop-controlled. It will remain stop-controlled with the proposed improvements. We are proposing to improve the intersection geometry. We're also proposing to add some sidewalk and a new crosswalk along the front of West Yarmouth Road. In addition, for the limits of the project, we are adding bike lanes along West Yarmouth Road. At the two signalized intersections of Winslow Gray Road and South Sea Avenue, we are proposing to replace the signal in kind with new, modern signal equipment. The turn lanes that are out there today, the shape of the intersection is going to remain generally the same with some just minor improvements geometry-wise. We are proposing to provide full multimodal accommodations throughout the two intersections with the shared use path and sidewalk. We are proposing to add bike lanes along both Winslow Gray Road and South Sea Ave. And replace the sidewalk that's along South Sea Avenue in kind. Because there's a roundabout proposed with this project, I want to go into a little greater detail about, in general, about roundabouts. So in Massachusetts, there is a lot of circular intersections, with about two-thirds of them being rotaries and one-third of them being new, modern roundabouts. And the number of roundabouts within the state is continually growing. Now, while they are similar, there's some key differences that I want to highlight. So rotaries comprise of large circles that encourage high speeds and often require weaving to navigate through the intersection. They were constructed in the 1930s up through the 1950s, and they really don't translate well into modern traffic needs. Where roundabouts, on the other hand, are a lot smaller and compact, which forces speeds within the intersection to be a lot slower, around 25 miles an hour and less. And one key attribute is that weaving is not required to navigate through the intersection. So similar to a traffic signal, if there's multiple lanes present, based on the lane designation, you choose the lane you want need to be in, and then you remain in that lane all the way through the intersection. So you do not need the weave when you're in a roundabout. One of the key reasons why roundabouts are, number of roundabouts are increasing throughout the state is the safety that they provide. And the key factor to that safety is related to the slow speed conditions that roundabouts create. So as I noted before, speeds within a roundabout are around 25 miles an hour or less, which provides drivers more time to judge and react to other cars and pedestrians and new information, which is particularly advantageous for older and novice drivers, who just benefit a little bit more time to process. If an incident does happen, if a crash does happen because of the slow speeds, it's less likely to result in an injury, which is particularly important for pedestrians because speed, for unprotected users, speed's a key factor to how the, what's going to end up, be the end result of the crash. So on the right is a diagram that shows the shortest stopping distances associated with each, with a very, a series of speeds. And that stopping distance is broken into two components. In green, you have the thinking distance, the time it takes to perceive and react to new information, to decide to come to a stop. And in orange, you have the actual physical distance it takes to come to that stop. And what you'll see is that it's not a one-to-one ratio between the speeds and the distance. So if you compare 20 miles an hour to 40 miles an hour, while the speed is twice, 40 is twice of 20 miles an hour, the stopping distance is three times that. So when you create an environment where everyone is traveling really slow, it provides a situation where people are better able to react to information and avoid collisions. This is, this has resulted in where roundabouts go, when they get installed, there's a significant reduction in fatalities and injury crashes, and a significant reduction in both pedestrian and bike crashes. Roundabouts are safe.
Actually, the safest type of intersection.
So one of the key concerns when a roundabout is being proposed is how does it, how do emergency vehicles and tractor-trailers navigate through the intersection? So for tractor-trailers, roundabouts are designed for the largest vehicles that are expected on that roadway. And there's certain features within the intersection that are used specifically for those larger vehicles. And one of the key ones is in the center of the roundabout called a mountable truck apron. And it's the surface that tractor-trailers are able to utilize to navigate through the intersection that is designed in a way to discourage from passenger cars from wanting to drive on it. So it gives them that extra space that's needed for them to get through the intersection. For emergency vehicles, rounds are also quite beneficial. They can utilize that same truck apron to bypass disabled vehicles within the intersection, so they have a lot of extra width if they need to get by vehicles. It creates a slow speed environment that makes it easier for them to navigate, where they don't have to worry about preemption that you would have at a signal, or worry about if they're running a red light, whether or not other drivers will perceive them and react and come to a stop. It's just not a concern at a roundabout. So what I want to talk about more is how will bicyclists and pedestrians be impacted with this project? One of the key reasons for this project was to provide complete facilities along Route 28, and this being a very important group with this design. So we are, this proposed design includes full multimodal accommodations throughout the limits of the project that will be constructed compliant with the regulations of the Americans' Disabilities Act. In addition to this, we are proposing numerous new crosswalks throughout the project, including a lot of mid-block crossings. And these mid-block crossings will be supplemented with rectangular rapid flashing beacons at key locations. And at the roundabout, a pedestrian hybrid beacon is being proposed to supplement that, the two-lane exit. The shared use path, as John noted, is going to be 10 feet wide with five-and-a-half-foot wide sidewalks on the opposite side of the roadway. So there'll be accommodations on both sides of the roadway, with new accommodations on many of the side streets. At the roundabout, there'll be high visible, high visibility crosswalks, and each of those crossings will be two-stage. So once again, allows pedestrians and bicyclists who are utilizing, have to only interact with one direction of traffic at a time, and the crossing distance is shorter.
And the traffic's moving slower.
And they're moving slower. That's one key thing to note, is that the crosswalks where they're proposed in vicinity of the roundabout is where we expect vehicle traffic to be somewhere at their slowest. So we're trying to put the crosswalks in an environment that improves their safety. And that ties right into this slide, the benefits of roundabouts for bicyclists and pedestrians. So for unprotected users, speed is a key factor regarding to whether or not, what the outcome will be if a collision happens. On the right side of the screen, you will see a diagram that has a series of speeds and the chance of a fatality if a pedestrian is struck at that speed. You can see that as you go, you advance past 30 miles an hour, the chance of a fatality significantly increases. And as a reminder, roundabouts are 25 miles per hour or less environment. Another key concern is how do bicyclists navigate through a roundabout? And bicyclists have a couple of options. Those cyclists who are more confident, they are able to merge with vehicle traffic and navigate with the vehicles through the roundabout. One thing to remind is that the vehicles are traveling slow, so they're going to be in a situation that cyclists should be able to navigate at a similar speed. Those who are less confident can use a bike ramps that are present along each of the approaches and travel around the roundabout along the shared use path with pedestrians. So depending on the level of comfort, there's multiple options available for cyclists, how they want to navigate through the intersection. So at this point, I want to turn this back over to John, so discuss how properties will be impacted with the project.
Thanks, Steve. So we're going to discuss a little bit of the right-of-way process. Mast dot is responsible for acquiring all the necessary rights in the public land for design, construction, and implementation of the project. Fee takings, permanent easements, temporary easements, they'll, they'll be required as part of the project. Effective property owners, they'll be contacted by personnel from Mast dot Right-of-Way Bureau or consultants representing the responsible agency. Property owners are protected under Mast general law, primarily Chapter 79. And preliminary right-of-way drawings, they're up front here, available tonight for public review and comment. At this stage of the design, the right-of-way process, keep in mind, has not been finalized. This meeting is an opportunity for the public to comment on any impacts to the properties. So this slide is just an example of the different types of easements being proposed along the corridor. So shaded here in blue, this is the state highway layout alteration. This is a fee-taking that the state will acquire in order to construct the proposed project. Some examples would be for constructing sidewalks, shared use path. And in orange, shaded in orange, this is a permanent easement. This is typically acquired mainly for overhead utility wires. This will grant utility companies access to service their utility poles and/or overhead wires as represented in this example up on the screen. And finally, in shaded in green, this is a temporary construction easement. This gives permission to the contractor to access a property for construction purposes. These are typically taken for grading purposes and driveway reconstruction, and they typically expire after about five years. Next, I can briefly touch upon some of the environmental impacts and permitting that will be required for the project. So on, on the screen, you'll see a list of wetland resource areas identified within and adjacent to the project limits. These wetland resource areas, they were delineated about four years ago in 2019. The boundaries of these wetland resource areas, they will be redelineated and confirmed prior to the submission of permit applications. Due to the location and alignment of Route 28, they're both coastal and inland resource areas within and adjacent to the project limits, including the land subject to title Prior to moving into construction, GPI will be working to obtain several required environmental permits. The permits are required due to the project's scope and proximity to environmental resource areas such as wetlands and streams, as well as the historic resources that are located within the project limits. The list on the screen includes several of the environmental permits that the project team will be filing. Most of these will, they typically take place during the 75 and 100% design phases. So there will be additional opportunities for public comment during the MEPA process and the Wetland Protections Act process as well. So due to the need for the proposed vehicular, pedestrian, and bicycle improvements in the close proximity to wetland resource areas, adjacent to the existing edge of roadway, impacts to wetland resource areas are essentially unavoidable. Impacts will be minimized to the extent practicable, and all unavoidable impacts will be mitigated through some of the following, the measures you can see up on the screen. Mast dot and GPI will coordinate with the town of Yarmouth, the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, and any other relevant stakeholders to identify the appropriate mitigation for the proposed impacts to properties subject to protection under Article 97. Mitigation may include replacement land and/or in lieu fee payments that meet the criteria of the, of the Public Lands Protection Act. There are several historic properties adjacent to the project limits, including the Baxter Gris, the Baxter Gris Mill, which is actually listed on the National Historic Register of Historic Places. The project will be reviewed under Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act of 1966. And impacts to historic properties, they will be reviewed during the MEPA and NEPA filing processes. Briefly now describe the approach to construct the project. So existing travel lanes, they, they will be maintained to the extent possible in order to limit travel disruption, but construction will impact motorists, and drivers should plan accordingly. Fully ADA-compliant pedestrian and bike access will be maintained. The construction of the roundabout becomes quite complicated since we need to significantly transform the intersection while maintaining traffic flow. In order to accomplish this, the construction will consist of several stages to shift traffic so that portions of the project can be constructed, completed. Generally speaking, the project will start with the removal of the existing traffic signal and the installation of a temporary traffic control system at the Route 28 and East Main Street intersection. The contractor will typically develop a staging plan to share with the community prior to construction, and will utilize variable message boards two weeks in advance of construction to help notify the public of certain activities. So how will the roadway user be affected? Roadside work such as shared use path, sidewalk, and curb installation, they'll take place during regular construction work hours. These activities will be outside of the traveled way and wouldn't impact the travel lanes. Roadwork within the traveled way will occur during off-peak hours when traffic volumes are lower. During these times, there may be short-term detours and/or the use of alternating one-way traffic. It's expected that police details will be utilized to help facilitate these temporary traffic control setups.
And of course, there's a summer-long moratorium on construction work, especially on this stretch of Route 28, everywhere on the Cape. But nowhere more needed than on this three miles of Route 28, which we all know is incredibly busy in the summertime.
The project, it strives to limit the impact to abutters by always maintaining access. However, short-term impacts are likely, but the resident engineer will communicate with the abutters in order to best coordinate when those short-term impacts could be accommodated. Night work, it's not anticipated at this time, but may be desirable from the contractor's perspective in order to achieve, or to, in order to accelerate construction while vehicle volumes are low. If, but if the contractor wishes to utilize the nighttime work, they will need approval from both the town and Mast dot. And lastly, the construction of this project, it's anticipated at this time to last approximately four years. In terms of next steps on the project, so after tonight, we'll consider any comments received and proceed with a 75% design to be completed hopefully by next fall. After that, we will move into final design. After that, we will move into final design and hope to obtain the necessary environmental permitting during approximately the summer/fall of 2026. We'll then work with the town to secure the necessary right-of-way by the winter of 2027, 2028. And as Tom mentioned earlier, the project's scheduled to advertise for late spring, advertise for construction late spring of 2028. So, this means that construction is, could likely start during the fall of 2028. So, how can we keep you informed? You can visit the project website that's located up on the screen. Submit email comments to the email address that's on the screen. It's also in the handout that's provided up as soon as you walk in. So, if you haven't grabbed one, feel free to take one on your way out. And also in that handout, you can submit written comments to the chief engineer, Carrie Lavalley, and to that address there on the screen. At this point, we'd like to open it up to questions and discussions.
Thank you very much. You guys just put in a tremendous amount of work to generate this presentation and what's behind it, all the design work. So, before we begin this part, the most important part where we hear from you, I just want to reiterate from Melissa's perspective that we need, we need you to tell us who you are and to spell your last name so we get it right in the closed captioning.
Hi, I'm Glenn Bolliger, last name Bolliger, B-O-L-L-I-G-E-R. I'm a resident of West Yarmouth. It's kind of a simple question. First off, I applaud your hard work, and I think this is a great idea. Steve mentioned repeatedly the roundabout limits the speed to 25 miles an hour. I think all of us realize that driving on either Route 6 or Route 3, the speed limit is a wishful number and is not entirely realistic, since most of us travel much more rapidly just keeping up with traffic. So, the 25 mile an hour description, is that something that's wishful thinking? Again, this is the limit, or is it mechanically restricting your, can, you cannot possibly drive more than 25 miles an hour?
You're very intuitive, yeah. You can't physically drive a modern roundabout faster than 25 miles an hour.
Limits that.
Well, the geometry is so tight that you can't navigate it at speed. You have to drive, typically, these will operate, actually, it's slower than 25. I think the other ones on the Cape, there's some in Orleans, I think there's two in Orleans, there's a couple in Harwich. These gentlemen designed a beautiful one in Oak Bluffs a few years ago that, prior to its installation, received incredible opposition. People were really frightened of it for God knows what reasons. But anyway, after it went in, the public opinion completely reversed, which is very typical for modern roundabouts, where 90% opposed prior to it going in and 90% approved afterwards. And the public in Oak Bluffs and elsewhere on the island actually came up and apologized because they were so happy with the way it worked. But yeah, the geometry, as you approach a roundabout, all the entries or approaches, you'll notice there's a slight right turn. You can't, there's no visible, clear, straight ahead. You can't run a roundabout like you can a red light. You would end up in the, in the middle. Yeah. They're actually incredibly safe, and people get the hang of them pretty quickly, I think. Yes, sir?
Good evening. My name is Chris Flanagan. My last name is spelled F-L-A-N-A-G-A-N. I am a state representative that represents Yarmouth. I'm joined here by my friend and colleague, Kip Diggs. I was here with you all back in August. Welcome back. We definitely appreciate your partnership. We appreciate the amount of time that you've spent in planning this project, and certainly we appreciate the investment that Mast DOT is going to make into this project. I am here to speak on wastewater, and certainly, as you know, wastewater is an expensive endeavor for the Town of Yarmouth. We, and I, you know, believe and feel comfortable saying that, in working with our partners with Mast DOT, that the Town of Yarmouth was hoping to enjoy some cost recovery in terms of the betterments project along the Route 28 corridor. As a practical matter, I understand that things take time, and I appreciate that, but would welcome the opportunity to work with you all and to meet with you all, perhaps with the town administrator and some select board members, to figure out a timeline that makes sense and makes both the betterments and the wastewater infrastructure implementation project timeline align. And I know we talked about this briefly in August, but would welcome that opportunity. And really, the credit goes to you all for making yourselves so available. We've met a few times leading up to the hearing in August, but really would welcome the opportunity to chat with you and revisit the timeline again to make sure that, you know, if there are efficiencies, cost efficiencies, both from your perspective and from the towns that we explore, that I don't think that the Town of Yarmouth wants to dig up Route 28, you know, place the infrastructure just for Mast DOT to dig it up again. And so, you know, I think that we want to make sure that we pursue a path that makes, that's mutually beneficial and makes sense. So, really appreciate your consideration of that. I have a feeling you'll be hearing from me and certainly Kip Diggs, and look forward to continuing the conversation.
Thanks, Mr. Flanagan. Yeah, we've been working with the town, and unfortunately, the wastewater design is a little ahead of our roadwork. We have explored issuing perhaps a utility contract, relocation contract, in advance of the roadwork. And that may be possible with our current schedule, but it's also, it's basically another whole design package, just like what we're producing for the roadwork, but we have to do it, say, two years in advance to give the utility companies time to move their stuff and at the same time, perhaps, drop in the sewer. The sewer work, but that's still two or three years away, and you're ready to go. I mean, the wastewater contracts, I think, want to go next spring, I believe. But we're going to continue to be in communication and work toward that common goal. And if there is a way to, there must be, and we'll find it. Yeah.
Good evening, everybody. Rep. Kip Diggs, Second Barnstable, so I-
Could you spell your name, Rep.?
Diggs, D-I-double-G-S.
Thank you.
You won't be sorry about that. I guess what I, my concern is, of course, I used to be a construction inspector for the Town of Barnstable. So, I was the one that helped do the project in front of Route 6A in the courthouse, and we put the speed bumps, safety, travel area. So, and there's, you know, a lot of traffic goes there, but I will say that what was great about the town is that we put, we made sure that we had a, somebody there that could tell what was going on each day so that people could go ahead and talk to them or talk to a person. So, I'd recommend, you know, so that basically, they're not kind of the, our constituents aren't wondering what's going on or asking questions about their driveway, what have you. There'll be somebody constantly on the job so that somebody, you know, one of, will be able to speak with them. So, I recommend doing something like that.
Yeah. That's a great, great point. I'm glad you brought that up. So, this work will all be administered by Mast dot, and Mast dot will have a construction resident engineer out there, an office out there. We'll probably have a website dedicated to this project where people can go and ask questions or find information about what's going to happen next. And part of the resident engineer staff work will be to notify the public along the route that's going to be impacted next, whatever operation they're performing, widening, striping, what have you, excavation. So, a great deal of their time is spent notifying the public, keeping people aware, informed about what's happening next. So, there's no question that this will be disruptive, and, but, I would hazard to say that Mast dot is pretty good at this. I mean, we do a lot of work.
No doubt. And I would also suggest, so we're working, they're working on Route 28, and making sure that, you know, there's a lot of businesses that are, that are working, that are breakfasts or whatever. We need to make sure that they have signs letting them know that they're open.
Yeah.
And making sure that businesses still, you know, can get in, get out. So, that's very important.
We can guarantee and will provide access continually to all the businesses that are open. There may be periods, well, there will obviously be periods where we have to occupy an entrance for a portion of a day, but we will find alternative routes for the customers to get into that business. We're going to work very hard to minimize negative impacts to business during the construction phase. Thanks for bringing that up. That's very important. Yes, sir?
Yeah, hi. My name is George Allegrezza, A-L-L-E-G-R-E-Z-Z-A, nothing silent. I'm in Yarmouth Port on the aforementioned Route 6A. Had a couple of technical questions about the design. I noticed the mention of the PHB, Pedestrian Hybrid Beacon. Had to look it up, thanks to the internet, and now know what it is. There's also, these exist in Warren on Route 6 West, as you exit, or I'm not sure what that is, rotary, roundabout, or whatever, but as you exit onto 25, I've noticed-
That's a rotary.
Okay. I've noticed that people tend to not know what that is. It's pretty unfamiliar, and people tend to, looking at the light, tend to break, or tend to get a little bit confused as they're, as they're turning right, so, and also, there's another one farther down west in that intersection. So, you know, my question is, how effective are those from the point of view of, I guess, the return on investment of having the signal there to provide the pedestrian crossing versus sort of the disruption to traffic, because it's not a common thing? Now, of course, 2028, 2030, perhaps, by the time we're done, we assume there'll be more and more people will be familiar with them. But it is, it is kind of a weird application of what the typical driver would consider a traffic signal. So, the question is, what, you know, will, how do you help familiar, maybe an unanswerable question, but how do you help familiarize people with this?
The trick is not to overuse them, right, Steve?
They got to be used strategically, and using them at exits of multi-lane roundabouts have been shown to be effective. Now, I agree that they are not very common yet, and they will become increasingly common as pedestrian signals get replaced with either rectangular rapid flashing beacons or these pedestrian hybrid beacons, but they have been shown to be effective. The red light indicator, people know what red light means, and they'll come to a stop, and as time, education will catch up. But that's the most important, is making sure that pedestrians have safe access across the road.
Right, thank you. The other question was at Camp Street, will there be any control of the crosswalk at that intersection?
There will not be a signal like that's getting used at the roundabout. A rapid, rectangular rapid flashing beacon is a tool that supplements, so it gets drivers' attention and significantly increasing yielding. So, it allows drivers, it's actuated, so someone presses a button, it turns on. It gains drivers' attention, they see the pedestrian, they yield.
But not at Camp Street?
We're all looking at a PHB there.
So, it's at the, it's along Route 28 by Camp Street. There's that mid-block crossing just east-
Right, so I think the gentleman was asking, what type of control are we putting there for pedestrians? Are we going to put in RRFB?
A rapid beacon?
Yep. Along Route 28 by Camp Street.
Yeah.
Yes.
East of Camp Street.
East of Camp Street.
Yeah, that crosswalk. Thank you. Yeah.
Good evening. My name is Christine Greeley, G-R-E-E-L-E-Y, and I have a question and I have some observations. I will state that I have been a homeowner in Yarmouth, down by Lewis Bay, since 1981, and a user of the whole stretch that you're talking about, you know, on a daily basis. And I, first of all, would like to know, when did you do traffic counts? And I'm specifically interested in the area from the Hyannis-Barnstable line over through, probably through Town Brook Road.
So, we don't count on the July 4th weekend, obviously. We try and mimic the, what is it, the 30th highest daily count? So, we do that in June typically, or October?
That is a good question. So, Yarmouth has unique conditions with how high traffic volumes are. So, when we look at traffic operations in similar type communities in this community, we do consider peak month conditions, and we do get counts during peak times, but we also understand what happens during off-peak times. So, we look at the whole scenario. So, we got traffic counts multiple times along Route, over the last few years, we've gone traffic counts along the corridor at different times. So, we do know what's happening during peak summer conditions and have designed for it.
But we don't, we don't design for the very worst traffic weekend of the year. For obvious reasons, we'd end up with a multi-lane freeway out there.
I'd also tell you, I mean, you could go out there now, do a daily morning count, and you won't believe the nightmare that's going on. Noontime is particularly bad. You know, it just depends what's going on there. I'll then go on to some of my observations. One is that I think there have been, and that's one of my concerns, is that that traffic out there is significant, and it isn't just summer traffic. It's sort of different times, morning, noontime, you know, that kind of thing. So, going out at 11 o'clock on Sunday morning to go do a traffic count wouldn't really give you a clear picture of what goes on there, and I am part of the traffic count, unfortunately. The, I think that part of the issues that have been taking place along there have a lot to do with the, what I see as obstructive views at a number of these intersections, and that includes not being able to see out at all unless you're pushing yourself way out into the roadway. And so, one of the things in wanting to see some of the things you're going to do with your lanes and your sides is very, very significant. It is particularly bad at the top of Wanworth, it's particularly bad at Camp where you're coming up an angle.
Oh, yeah.
It's particularly bad even down at the West Yarmouth Post Office, trying to get out of the post office if you're trying to make a turn heading east on 28. It's very obstructive with overgrowth, and so, things like that. That's been one of my concerns. I'm also very, very concerned about the roundabout. I, you know, when you take a look at the four lanes of traffic coming together, it basically looks as if it's some kind of a New England road race as people try to come out of the two lanes, you know, and get into one in a hurry. And so, I'm more familiar, I've actually driven a lot of roundabouts around the world even, but in particularly, a number of times out in Chatham. And what I find is, they don't have the kind of traffic that I think that we've got coming out of Hyannis, given that street coming, you know, heading east on 28, it's the only way out of the entire downtown area of Yarmouth. It's also the area for the hospital, people, staff leaving, things like that. And so, the concern is that that whole design of that roundabout worries me a great deal. I'm also very concerned because of the hospital. So, when you talk about the intersection, if you think about it, ambulances are, have controls in them in which they're able to stop a traffic light to then allow themselves to go through. So, if you have, and you, if you go out there on a daily basis, you will find ambulances coming down Camp Street, making a right-hand turn onto 28 to head to the hospital. And so, then you're now saying, okay, so if there's a lineup of any sort, how do they get up and around that roundabout to then indeed get into the hospital? And the same thing, that just so very much worries me in terms of that. It also worries me that when you talk about the closures of this area during construction, that is major, major routes for the ambulances in and out of the hospital, Cape Cod Hospital. The, when you close Camp Street to left turns, you have to really, really anticipate that the traffic on Town Brook is going to be heavier. And I also think that you need to make sure you're providing notices back up at Buck Island that there is no left turn ahead, because otherwise, you're going to have a mess of people up there breaking- up there breaking the rules and doing all kinds of oddball things at that intercept, in that intersection. I'm also very concerned about on-call pedestrian crossings, because you're talking about such a high, high traffic area that pedestrians, if they are able to sort of control when they want to cross, you're talking about stopping all of that traffic while they indeed do that. The other thing, um, clearly I've had a problem for years, and I've almost, I almost get hit once a week, the silly left turn lane that's been created at the bakery right prior to the left turn to go onto Camp Street. So if you're coming west trying to turn onto Wenward, sitting in the correct turn lane, you have somebody coming up almost wanting to hit you. So the idea that you're cleaning that section up is of great appeal. I also think there's significant issues with lighting. When you talk about utilities and other things along that corridor, one of the things that I notice very, very closely at night are the number of either pedestrians or bicyclists who are bicycling without lights or anything on that, in a dark clothes, and the lighting along that stretch of road from a Hyannis line over through, um, definitely even through Higgins Crowe is a nightmare. There's a lot of real gaps in there in terms of how dark it is, and you can see, given we've had pedestrian fatality, you can go there now and see the fence that's taken down by the car that drove into it on 28 right by Camp Street. Uh, I'm also interested about the bike lanes. Are they, are the bike lane is only gonna be on one side of the road, as I understand?
Correct.
Okay, then I have a real concern about that, because what happens for me on occasion in coming out of Wenward Way, when you are actually looking to get out of there, to get onto 28, you're looking left and right waiting for traffic, and I've had bicyclists going, you know, the wrong way for when you're actually going to make your turn into the road, and it may, it's very concerning that you've gotta be very, very careful in trying to exit onto 28 if you have a bike lane that's only one side of the road, uh, for bicyclists, so that they are not gonna be flowing with traffic, they're gonna be against the traffic, and that's a, a significant, significant concern to me.
The thing about the shared-use path though is it's, it's a two-way bike path.
Yeah, I know. But that's, my concern is basically-
It's separate from the roadway, it's behind the curb stone, so it's, it's like a big sidewalk, basically.
But it's still, in terms of, if you think about it when you're turning, you know, if you're making a turn either across, across traffic two lanes, the traffic, you typically have looked, you know, to your left and your right and that kind of thing, and then all of a sudden you've got a bicyclist coming in a way that you hadn't predicted. And I've seen that on several occasions, when I've had bicyclists going not with the expected traffic lane, they're coming the opposite way, so as I'm going to make my turn, thinking it's clear, I've suddenly got a bicyclist, I'm slamming my brakes on for. So, um, I just, uh, you know, I think, obviously, the significance of traffic, and I actually am one of your statistics, I got plowed into, and I was sitting in traffic on 28, and somebody decided to run the sign at, um, Town Brook and plowed into the side of my car, so I was part of your statistics. But we clearly need to do things, but I think there are some things that are of significance.
Those are all excellent observations and comments, and-
As I said, I'm a daily user, yeah, for years.
Nobody knows the road better than you and your neighbors.
Well, that's why the traffic count and some of it's really taking a look at the patterns of some of those, and I may be real concerned about that roundabout in terms of how it's gonna handle that, all of that traffic we have. Thank you.
The funny thing about roundabouts is that, uh, that we don't intuitively think about, is that they actually are very operationally efficient, because you never stop moving. That there's traffic moving in all directions in a roundabout at all times. So, you're never sitting there for 90 seconds or three or four minutes waiting for your phase to go on a signal. You're inching your way into the circle, and then around the circle and out, uh, whichever exit you're picking, uh, and you're always moving. So, they actually process quite a bit of traffic, actually more efficiently in a lot of, you know, uh, instances than a signal would.
But you are putting pedestrian signals in that will stop them from moving.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep. Yes, ma'am?
Vida Morris, M-O-R-R-I-S. Actually, uh, I want to talk a little bit about the, uh, fact that, uh, some land will be taken from the, uh, motels to create the bike path or the start of it from the town line and going, uh, east, uh, and I, I have a question for, actually for Jeff Colby here. Jeff, uh, are there any people here from the motel, uh, area, owners? Nobody, nobody seems to be concerned about that, right? I mean, they were notified, I mean, they were notified, right?
Oh, yes, yeah. And, uh, I'm sure we'll be hearing from them. Typically, we start to hear from people about impacts, like you're about to describe, when we approach them during the right-of-way acquisition process, you know, during the interviews, there's quite a lengthy interaction we have with abutters, but I, I do wanna-
The reason I, I ask these questions is that I, I thought, you know, maybe if, if they've known about this, and, and they don't seem to be concerned themselves, then probably I shouldn't be concerned either.
I think your concerns are very valid, and I want to assure you that we're gonna landscape, you know, for every tree that we take out, we'd like to put two back. But I, there's no denying that, that that 10-foot bike path, or shared-use path, as we call it, uh, is cutting into that nice landscaping in front of those motels.
Well, and the, the fact of the matter is, it, it used to be, most of the motels were kind of beginning to look a bit shabby and what have you, until the Hampton Inn came in and, uh, put in that beautiful landscaping, and the neighbors then started looking around, and suddenly everybody kind of upgraded themselves, and, and the only tacky, uh, place left there is that liquor store, uh, and that whole stretch until you get to, uh, Town, uh, Town Brook, I guess. And, as I said, I mean, I, I, I'm just very concerned that, uh, how much, most of the motels also sit fairly close to the roadway to begin with, and so if you take some more of that land, uh, I just, I don't understand, you know, how, how that's going to work.
Well, um, we, we do have the five-foot grass strip between the bike path and the roadway where we can landscape and add some green there. In addition, uh, behind the bike path, uh, within the limits of the right-of-way that we're gonna purchase, we, we plant a landscape, and then on the other side, the north side of 28, where we're building the sidewalk, uh, we also have a grass strip, I believe, don't we? No, no grass strip. But behind the sidewalk, we have a little bit of property that we can landscape as well. I understand your concerns, and typically, when we do a stretch at 28, uh, I like to think that Mastott leaves it better than we found it, uh, in terms of visual, you know, aesthetics. Uh, I, there's no question that they operate better, and they're safer, but I think that, it will look better as well.
Well, as I said, there's this very small area there between the, the street and the, the buildings where they start, so, uh, when you take, uh, another 10 feet or something away from them, uh, I, I'm having a little difficulty at visualizing how that would work. Let me ask you this, uh, what, uh, brought on the putting in the bike path in there?
Well, I think-
Oh, by the way, excuse me.
Yeah.
Is this, are we talking, the bike path will be from the, uh, town line to, uh, the three miles?
Yeah, the entire length, yep, and the sidewalk on the other side. So there'll be pedestrian access, it's called a shared-use path because both bikes and pedestrians can use the shared-use path. In addition, there are five-foot shoulders where bikes would be allowed to ride in the roadway. More confident riders probably prefer to be in the roadway, but especially in the summer months, you've got a lot of visitors, uh, families, little kids on bikes, they belong on a dedicated bike path, pedestrian path, they don't belong in the roadway, of course. So, we're addressing that need. So I, I meant to go back to the beginning of the presentation, this whole project initiated, was initiated because of some road safety audits that are, were performed by Mastott, and they're generated at high-crash locations, and some of the locations that were indicated on that map at the beginning of the presentation were high-bike crash locations, where bikes and vehicles were interacting in a bad way, and pedestrian accidents as well. So that's what initiated it, it's a safety issue out there, as we all know, and, um-
Well, that, it's primarily, uh, let me ask you this, uh, the, the casualties that occurred, uh, were these, these mainly, um, let's say, J1 stu-, uh, students, visa students, or?
I don't think anybody determined whether they were or weren't, they're just people out there getting hit by cars.
Mostly more during the tourist season than, uh-
I think, yeah, when the, the volumes are up for bikes and vehicles, yeah, that's probably when most of the accidents occur. But like tonight, it's just a treacherous, it's so dark out there, so early in the evening, and with the headlights, the oncoming, it's very difficult to see, as the lady before you mentioned, and, I mean, before the meeting, I was driving up to Chatham, I had dinner in Chatham, and then came back to the meeting, and, gosh, it's just, you're blinded by the oncoming traffic, and it's unsafe when people are in the shoulder, walking or biking. They need to be off the roadway on a safe pathway.
The reason I asked, you know, what brought it on-
Yeah.
Because I, I can't imagine that, um, most bikers would be using Route 28 for a pleasure ride or something like that.
Oh, it's just, it's, there's no place for them to ride.
This is sort of like a commuter-type thing or something, and, and, uh, so, I mean, how much use is being made by, uh, people for that purpose and what have you? I, I, I'm, I'm just, well, as you can see, I, I'm concerned about having the bike path, period, because, and the, the, the way it impinges on, on those motels and, and taking away more space, it's not like they're set back considerably, all of them are purely close to, to the road, and what have you.
So, we've determined there are bikes there, there will be more bikes in the future, and there are pedestrians, and there'll be more pedestrians, just like there'll be more vehicles, and we need to provide a safe place for them, because they pay taxes too, and they should be able to, uh, Mastott policy is, is to provide, you know, accommodation for all users, not just the vehicles, uh, the peds and the bikes and the vehicles.
Well, I, I think-
So this project actually addresses that very effectively, I think.
And, uh, I'm glad Mrs. Greeley brought up the fact that, uh, about the ambulance traffic to, uh, to the hospital, because, uh, that, you know, from Town Brook, uh, getting on 28, that's, that's the, the pathway to, to, for, from Yarmouth.
Yeah.
There's only, the only other way would be, you'd have to make, uh, a roundabout, get, get over to 6A and get on Willow, or stop to come in. Other than that, uh, that's the only way to, to go to the, for the ambulances to go to the hospital from Yarmouth.
Correct, but actually, uh, you know, I think we're gonna provide better access, better, um, more room for vehicles to get out of the way when a public safety vehicle has to get through, fire truck or ambulance, uh, and it's an obvious concern about roundabouts in that regard, because, uh, you know, there's no signal, there's no, but there is, those lanes are extra wide in the roundabout. In addition, there's the apron in the center, so there's plenty of room for people to get out of the way. I happen to live in Norfolk, Mass, where we have two roundabouts, and volume of traffic that's sort of mimics 28. And, we have a gas station on one quadrant, we have, uh, a strip mall, we have, uh, a church, and, uh, the fire station, and, and, uh, vehicles have no problem getting out of the way when a fire truck has to get through, or an ambulance, there's plenty of room to kind of squish to the side, and because everybody's not flying at 40 miles an hour, we, you know, it's, it's perfectly safe, and-
I, I should have, uh, prefaced this by saying, this, I'm talking about during the construction period, is what I'm-
During construction, yeah, but-
That's because you indicated that it could be here, you know-
Turn, and that's why we'll have staff out there.
Four years now, that one stretch is not gonna be four years, but, uh, still, that, I should have said that, I mean, it was during the construction period.
I mean, we're working on Yarmouth Road right now, uh, that's a project that I did with a different firm, and, and, uh, you know, it's very disruptive, I know, and it's not a smooth surface out there, it's kind of a bumpy, uh, bumpy area right now because of all the, there's an amazing amount of utility work that's underground at that intersection, everything going into Hyannis, the water, the electric is, passes underground through that intersection at Yarmouth Road. Anyway, of course, that's a huge corridor for safety vehicles getting to the hospital as well, and, um-
Well, the, the ones coming on, on six, on Route 6, you know, would take the, the exit at seven, exit seven.
Yeah, yeah.
But, uh-
They come right up Yarmouth Road.
I was thinking of Yarmouth itself.
Yeah. And so, uh, you're right, that's a, that's a, it's a, a concern that we need to address during construction, and we do that, uh, effectively, I believe. Thank you very much for your comments, I appreciate you getting up.
My name is Cindy Van Doren, V-A-N, capital D-O-R-E-N. A lot of what Chris Greeley had said concerns me as well, uh, the ambulances.
Yeah.
I've almost hit people on bicycles coming out of Baxter Avenue when I'm trying to get, ta-, even take a right, and the traffic is very heavy during the summer especially, but even during this time. And I think one of my biggest concerns is the light that will be put at Town Brook Road, when that traffic is very congested all the time, even without a light. If you have a light there, it's a very short distance to Baxter Avenue from that light. It will be all jammed up, trying to get out of Baxter Avenue, even to the right is gonna be difficult, as it is now. There's a lot of traffic buildup with people trying to take a left onto 28 from Baxter Avenue. And I think this needs to be looked at very carefully, because it's a nightmare waiting to happen. Either you'd have to have a right turn only, and then, or, there's, there's, there's gonna be a buildup from that light at Town Brook past Baxter Avenue many times during the year.
Right.
And trying to get out of Baxter Avenue is gonna be tough. Also, um, I was concerned about your detouring when you are doing the construction on, um, 28.
Well, there's a possibility of detours perhaps in certain stretches of it, uh, but primarily we, we would, I think there will be room to create, uh, a lane or two in each direction, uh, throughout most of the construction phase. There might be periods of, short periods of alternating one way, which would only be implemented probably in the middle of the night, when they're doing something like striping or paving. We certainly couldn't do those operations during the daytime, even in the off-season, because the traffic is so heavy year-round now.
Right. I, I'm just afraid where I live is gonna be a big, um, a lot of traffic's gonna be going through there, and, um, it needs to be kind of watched, that speed and everything.
Superlatives, but we do have the best in the business working on it.
I know, okay, I, I'm, I just want you to check out Baxter Avenue there at some point, because it's a, it's a real-
These are great observations.
Yeah, it's a, it's a real, um, eye-opener, if you actually are using that road quite often. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate your comment.
Good evening, John Hallgren from a, uh, from, from that alien town of, of Chatham, where we had the, probably the two most controversial roundabouts in Massachusetts history, I think.
Possibly, that one in Oak Bluffs was pretty, that was a tough battle, but they love it now.
Name, yeah, last name is Hallgren, H-A-L-L-G-R-E-N. I'm a seasonal resident, basically of, of Chatham, but I also, um, have property here in Yarmouth, and I've been using this, this part of 28 Road for 20 some odd years during the summer when I'm here, so I got fairly familiar with it. And I was on the Zooms, or the, the last meeting and so on, and, and obviously, one of the committee didn't have a chance to, so, thought I'd come back and try. And in the meantime, I, I reached out to Steve and so on by email and phone and so on, we had some conversations, and one of the things that, what I mentioned was this, that whole thing with the ambulances and so on, and the roundabout, um, and, you know, basically the idea that, you know, would there be need for some sort of an opticon or, or traffic light system to stop the traffic that's heading sort of east on 28, so the ambulance would have more of a clear path, but seeing that video tonight and so on, I think it's, you know, and seeing a little bit more in detail, I think that's probably not a problem.
Yep.
But it was something that somebody else brought up tonight, and I think it was, you know, it is a concern. The other thing that, obviously, things that have learned, I think you guys maybe learned from, from, from Chatham was, for instance, um, well, like, when it was being under construction, obviously, you know, I believe there was a car carrier that decided to try to cross, straight across, and- straight across and, you know, got hung up and, yeah.
Yeah.
And during the construction period, when the apron curbing was there, but the final pavement wasn't--
Right, that's what the problem was.
Right. So there basically was no wares for the trucks to use because they had this essentially like three or four inch curbing that they couldn't climb up on.
Right, so the apron wasn't--
Right.
Available to them then, yeah.
Right, and this is obviously going to be a little bit larger, but I'm still wondering if there isn't some way to maybe, you know, have that--
That was one instance, and it's a very valid point you bring up.
Right.
But I think we can avoid that in the future, I think.
I think there were other cases that were, were basically, you know, that was the major incident that first happened, but there were other incidents after that where it was a similar problem where--
They're pretty tight, those little, they're, they're small. I'm very familiar with the Chatham ones, as you know.
Right.
Yeah, so that's, that's a construction staging flaw that apparently we blew it in that regard during the construction of those two roundabouts in that we didn't provide adequate maneuverability for the vehicles during the construction phase. They tried to plan it out so that if they're taking away, if they're creating a work zone, say in the center to work on the island in the middle--
Right.
They create room on the outside to accommodate--
And that was--
--all the vehicles that would use it. And there are some huge boat ferries and car ferries that go through those two circles in Chatham, like they would here and certainly in--
Right, and I realize, you know, that there is things in the construction pretty well, but essentially, you know, there was that, I didn't know if there'd be some way to maybe, you know, while during that period to have sort of almost like a temporary ramp to, you know, on the, on the curbing so that either they're not faced with that four inch or whatever it is, you know, that they can't really climb over and use at all.
Right. I think, I think it'll be somewhat easier on this particular roundabout because it's primarily two lanes, almost the entire circle is two lanes, so it's wider.
Right.
There's more room to shift traffic around while we're working in the center or say on one side, one quadrant of the circle.
Yeah.
You know, there's more room to play with during construction phase here at East Main and 28 than there was in Chatham. Those are very tight, small diameter roundabouts.
And I was, I also like the idea of having that signal there essentially at the Salvation Army Reebok store and so on, because when I'm coming back sometimes from Hyannis and so on, trying to turn up on that, you know, and you can't really see because of the topography, you know, is there somebody coming the other way, you know, you know, and see they want to turn in front of them and, but one of the other things that I've, that I've noticed as far as in Chatham, I don't use the roundabouts, not often, but I've had cases where I'm coming, basically heading into downtown in Chatham and so on, and there's like, I'm coming, my, you know, heading east, somebody else is coming west and so on, and that's the only traffic there is, and the car in front of me just pulls up to the thing and just stops.
Yeah.
And I'm like--
Yeah.
You know, and it's not an out-of-state plate, so I'm like, you know--
Well, it's, you know, good drivers and bad drivers, and we have to understand in a roundabout in a circular roadway, the people in the circle have the right of way.
True, but when there's no way around, it could be in the round, you know--
I know, if they decide to stop, we're in trouble, and that's why we, yeah, they shouldn't stop.
But I'm really actually impressed by the number of people that didn't turn out for this considering how much, how important this potential situation is. Thank you very much.
Right. Thank you very much, Mr. Hallgren, for your comments.
Good evening. My name is Lynda Bolliger, last name B as in boy, O-L-L-H-I-G-E-R. I'm here representing Hyannis Park in Yarmouth, which is the neighborhood that will probably be affected mostly by all of this construction. And I just wanted to point out that what we ask of you is that communication is going to be really crucial, because if you would take the time to take a look at a map of Hyannis Park, we have literally one route in and one route out, and it empties into Cape Cod Hospital. So we are very concerned about the impact of all of this construction on our neighborhood, so we would ask that you reach out to the town and they can reach out to us so that communications will continue to be up to date for us.
That'll be the true measure of our job, of how well we do it.
That's how we, we will be judging you guys, because the plan is terrific and we're all excited about all of the changes.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
You're right, communication will be the most important thing we do, and--
Correct.
We do have some tools to facilitate that. We, on big projects like this, we have websites, we, we have a firm that maintains them and puts out the information in advance to the public so they're not surprised by some operation we start doing out there. We try our best to communicate to the public, and we will do so on this project. Yes, sir?
Good evening. Tom Nikinello, N-I-C-K-I-N-E-L-L-O. I'm very fortunate, I live on Route 28 for all my life, and it's a great road since 1922, 151 miles long, goes through 28 communities, and, you know, some of the, some of that road is never going to be enhanced or fixed, unfortunately, the way it is, especially in our community. I think last time we talked a little bit about some of the hiccups at Camp Street in Hyannis off of East Main, which causes a backup at the light or the new roundabout. And I think we talked about Yarmouth Road at the railroad tracks and the airport rotary also jamming up, causing a big delay. So now we have those three choke points. We have people coming south on Camp Street in Yarmouth, going west on 28, now taking a left. We have people coming east on East Main Street, now going to be taking a left, going north on 28. So there seems to be like a lot more vehicles there, but the choke points seem to be beyond Yarmouth. So I'm not too sure, maybe it could work out, but there's a lot of cars from the airport rotary coming all the way to Town Brook Road. Now, not all the time, you know, maybe today and a month from now, you'll see a lot of traffic, and then the three months that were, you know, at peak, there's a lot of vehicles there, so it just seems like there's a, I understand the concept about taking a left on Camp Street, I think that's great. The sidewalks that you guys provide on these roads, the side roads, are they like 20 feet and then you stop?
They stop at the limits of the project, yeah.
Right, so then it's going to be a sidewalk from the town to connect those, so they're, like, connecting?
Sure if the town chooses to do so, yeah.
Yeah, as you stated earlier, you know, Route 28's a great road, but it's very inconsistent, as we all heard, right?
Right.
So we're going to try to make it consistent, which is great--
Yep.
--in some spots. Some spots will never be great, and that's okay. It's a road, it's what we travel on, and until we get everybody out of cars, we're going to have this problem. So on the shared use bike path, we're going to have bicyclists, we're going to have no mopeds but electric bikes?
Uh, I, you know, I have to defer to Steve. Are electric bikes considered vehicles, motorized vehicles, or are they allowed on the SUPs?
I think this is more of a community and state jurisdiction challenge, so depending on the communities will define what is allowed where.
Yeah, yeah.
So I can't speak specifically--
Sure, that's fine.
I should know the answer to this, but I don't.
I'm just saying, because, you know, our, our evolution is, you know, electric bikes, scooters--
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, now we have bikes with motors, right? So this is all good for people to move around, but where are they going to be? Are they going to be in the road? Are they going to be on the shared use bike path?
I think they'd be on the shared use path, the electric bicycles.
Common sense would tell you they would do that.
Yeah.
Right, so--
Motorbikes would be in, you know, motorcycles would be in the roadway--
Different.
Electric bicycles would be in the bike path.
The stuff you don't have to register, I guess, where's that going?
Correct, yeah, yeah, bingo.
Right, so, and then I guess a question just for the width-wise, from roadway curway to roadway curway, is how wide?
So two elevens, two five-foot shoulders, so that's 32 feet?
32 feet.
Yeah.
32 feet, so that's pretty adequate, right? So you'd be able to pull people off--
Correct.
Have the emergency vehicle come down--
Yes.
Until they see a bus that stopped in the middle of the road, right? We have--
Even they can pull over to the right.
Well, you know, the pedestrian buses are terrific, they really are, they help a lot of people.
Yep.
But I think, you know, some kind of designated area, and, you know, we've had the bus folks here before, and it's, you know, on-demand pickup. Well, on-demand pickup is great until it's like, you know, 20 pickups within a mile, right? It's just--
People have designated bus stops along this corridor. No? John shaking his head, no. All right, that's a great point.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, like--
Maybe we should.
Like you said, Tom, I mean, the best type of traffic problem to have is to keep people moving, right?
Yes, yeah.
Doesn't matter if they're moving a mile or two miles, as long as nobody wants to stop.
Right, right, yeah.
Right? We're on vacation, we come to Cape Cod for a week, and, you know, three of the days are just stopped in traffic. That's not a good vacation, and we want those people to come back, right?
Yeah.
That's half our problem, infrastructure gets in the way and people don't want to come here. They take a couple of seasons off, then they come back here and find out it's no any better, right? But we'll, we'll get there eventually. And then I think last time we mentioned the grass strips in between the roadway and the shared use path and the maintenance to that.
Yeah.
And I don't think the question, the answer got, the question got an answer, so I was just kind of concerned if it's going to be on our employees, on our town to maintain those grass strips.
We seek--
We have a hot enough time, as is now.
Mastaut struggles to maintain the landscaping that we own. We, we seek to get maintenance agreements with communities that we build in where aesthetics are important, like on this stretch.
Right.
So we would seek, yeah, we'd talk to Jeff and see if we can get him to sign a maintenance agreement and get the--
Well, I mean, it's, it's going to have to be maintenance, right?
Correct, yes.
I mean, we're all in favor of widening the road, we're all in favor of making it more safe, but we want it to look good as we're driving up and down the roadway and, you know--
Especially here on the Cape, I mean--
Mother Nature is just so, you know, demanding of what she wants to produce, and you ain't going to stop it, so--
That's right. I do know, since I drove through the Chatham project tonight, that that landscaping's coming nicely and is mowed and looks pretty darn good right now. The two interior islands and the two roundabouts in Chatham, we got agreements from the community, the businesses--
Sure, exactly, yeah.
And we hope to do that in Barnstable as well at the East Main Street Roundabout.
Yeah, and then I guess that was one of my last thoughts was the, as Chris Greeley mentioned, you're going to have a pedestrian button at the roundabout. To me, I think the pedestrian signal is probably less than if you're waiting for a light, right?
Much.
So--
They're only crossing one lane, basically, or--
Right.
A wide--
Right.
One lane.
And stopping traffic there is probably going to be normal anyways because the other choke points--
It's a yield condition there, yeah, when you enter the circles.
Right, we're not doing anything at East Main Street and Camp and Barnstable, so that's still going to be a choke point.
Yeah.
The railroad tracks, because you can't take a left on 28 to go left into Hyannis on Camp Street, that's still going to be a problem.
Yeah.
And then the rotary at the airport, most naturally, is, it's a problem, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Nice to see you again, thank you.
Nice to see you too.
Well, I don't see anybody else standing up.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah, by all means, yeah, well, I wanted to reiterate that we'll be here as long as you would like us to be here, and--
Hi, George Almagroza again. Thank you. In the construction of the, of the roundabout itself, is it, I know there's a question about speed through it and access through it and everything, and is it cambered or banked in any particular way? And the reason I ask is one was built at UMass where I used to live in Shrewsbury, outside the hospital, and it's actually cambered the wrong way.
Oh.
So it's almost impossible to go rapidly through it.
That's correct, yeah, that's for drainage.
I wouldn't recommend that because it really is very unpleasant to drive through--
Right, yeah.
But it's not fast.
No, we don't, we don't add any super elevation to the roundabouts--
Okay.
Or reverse super elevation. We, we just, on a typical roadway lane, we slope at 2% to the outside to get the water out--
Right.
--into the gutter.
Yeah, and then as someone who's had to make presentations that are sometimes controversial, one of the little tricks, if I may offer it, is to put a worst option in the slide deck. So put a diverging diamond interchange up as an, as a, as an option with a big red X, and people will love the rotary or the roundabout.
Keep that in mind.
Given, given that he just did that a second time, I just wanted to make a comment. I do think Nick's comment about the designated bus stops, because that is a nightmare out there on 28.
Yeah, yeah.
And I mean, obviously it would take a lot of negotiation between the bus corporations and the town and all, but it would also make it perhaps safer, you know, if there was some kind of little area that they can pull into as opposed to making people sort of stand. I've seen them, you never know if they're trying to cross the street or what they're doing, because they're sort of half into the road and half on the sidewalk waiting for the bus. The second thing is when you, we talk about that grass strip you're going to have, that five foot, I would really, really request that you make sure that when you talk about landscaping it, nothing that's going to grow really high, because the visibility issue is a nightmare coming out of these side streets. And it really, I think it'd be very important also for pedestrians or anyone bicycling to be able to see the traffic that's over there too. And there has been a significant issue from either the town or the state in maintenance, because I mentioned that before, of a visibility and being able to see when you pull out. And Lynda, jump Mallinger's point, I mean, there are several hundred homes down in Hyannis Park, and we rely strictly on Wenward, Baxter, and Bayview to get in and out, that's it. So, you know, a lot of this is a real concern. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Greeley. So we do have a set of right-of-way plans here. I'm sure some, somebody in the audience might be curious about what the particular impacts we propose in front of their property, and we, we have this here to answer that question for you, and, and I do want to direct you also to the TVs out in the hallway where we have this fly-through video that Greenman Peterson has created, John and his team have created, that gives you a bird's eye view of the entire corridor as proposed, and it's really pretty neat to watch. And we will stay here to answer any questions informally for as long as you'd like us to. I, I guess for Melissa's recording, I do want to say that we'll take, we'll close the hearing tonight at 7:50 formally, but we'll remain here for as long as you'd like us to. Thank you so much for coming out tonight.